I'd like to call this Wednesday, May 6, 2015, a Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I'll make a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes and approve the minutes as prepared. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the board on agenda items only? Agenda items only. Seeing none, we're going to move into proclamation and presentation. I'm going to turn it over to... First, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Stayback and then over to Commissioner O'Malley.
My proclamation will pay tribute to Kevin Borelli and reads as follows. County Commissioners, Lackawanna County, PA proclamation. Whereas on April 12, 2015, Kevin Borelli, a native of Dixon City, won the Second Annual Scranton Half Marathon in one hour, 12 minutes, 47.95 seconds. Kevin is a former Mid Valley High School standout runner and a graduate of Duquesne University. He is a two-time Steentown Marathon winner, having won back-to-back titles in 2008 and 2009. Mr. Borelli has competed in the Berwick Thanksgiving Run for the Diamonds, Virginia Beach, and Philadelphia Marathons, as well as the Lehigh Valley's St. Luke Half Marathon, an event he won in 2011. He has won the Greater Binghamton Bridge Run Half Marathon and placed in the top 30 in the U.S. National 20K in New Haven, Connecticut. He is a math teacher in the Pocono Mountain School District and is a cross-country coach for Marywood University. In 2013, Kevin was named Regional Coach of the Year in conjunction with advancing the women's team to the Nationals. He has coached 55 all-conference runners, eight all-regional finishers, one individual national qualifier, and one team national qualifier. His biggest fans are his family, wife Brenda, son Jacob, and daughter Cassidy. Now therefore, we, Jim Wonsak, Pat O'Malley, and me, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim May 6, 2015, as Kevin Borelli Day in Lackawanna County.
All right. Thank you.
What did you think of the half? What did you think of the half marathon?
First of all, I'd like to say it sounds a lot better when you guys say all that stuff. A half marathon's great. They put on an awesome show. I'm happy to be a part of the community. I'm happy to be a local person. Makes you run a little harder. So with that type of support, I got lucky with it, a great day, and like I said, it's a great event for the community.
Second-place runner, 35, 40 seconds behind you.
About that, yeah.
Because I remember I was at the finish line when he came through. There was much long distance.
There's a little bit of a gap there, yeah. It was, I mean, my training wasn't to the part that I wanted, so I kind of just ran enough to win, so he kept him comfortably behind, so it was a... But it was good. He's a good runner. He had a really good day himself. Thomas, he runs for the same club that I do, so I was happy to see him get second.
What mile was the breakway?
Going up the hills by Cooper... Actually, by Electric Street. Yeah, they...
Tough hill.
Three or four miles in, yeah. Electric Street is a little tough. So right off the bat, like, they, you know, they were hanging around for about three or four miles, but as soon as we hit the hills, I felt them breathing a little heavier, and I felt comfortable, so I kind of just kept the same pace, and they fell back a little bit, but...
Were you going to see at Steentown this year?
Actually, I was just talking about, I've been... I took some time off after the half. I was nursing a few injuries before it, so I didn't know what type of shape I'd be in during the half, but I'm really hoping that we get a good summer, and I'm hoping to be there for the 20th annual.
The 20th one. This is the one to be at this year.
Yeah, so it's a special one, yep.
Yes, it is. Commissioner?
Kevin, congratulations. You know, and I'm told, I'm not a long-distance runner, so you would have left me at the starting line. You would have been a long, long way ahead of me. But one of the things that I'm told on the half-a-marathon is, from some of the people that I know, and I'm not going to mention some names, some people in this room, that the most... And you don't have this feeling, so this is why I'm putting it out there. They said the hardest part of the race is when you're running, and all of a sudden, you're seeing the other runners running back the other way on the trail. They said it just...
Well, yeah, it is a little tough.
You don't have that saying, but the other people coming up are...
It's pretty inspiring, that part of the race, because a lot of those people are cheering me on, you know, "Good job, what a go," and with your name on the bib, they're all calling your name out, so that's pretty nice. But it is a little bit tough, because when you hit the trail, you're around mile eight, and immediately when you go into the trail, you see mile 10. So you're like, "Oh," because like, you've got to like, turn around, and so you've got to come all the way back. So you see that 10 there, and it's like, "I wish I was there." But it's not... You're right. It's not as bad for those that are further in the back, because they also have to deal with a lot of the traffic going in both directions. But it is... It could be a little bit of a mental, you know, mentally discouraging, so...
When you hit the turnaround point, did you look down at the watch to start figuring out how much further the person was behind?
You could gauge it. Yeah, yeah, I gauge it. Yeah, yeah. Actually, well, the guy on the bike, he took me the wrong way for a little bit, and he felt really, really bad about it. It's actually a funny story. He's my neighbor's dad, so I see him all the time. He actually brought me a case of beer, because he felt so bad about it.
Good neighbor.
I was... I must... I had a... I felt like I was coaching him for a while during the race, because he kept on saying, "I'm sorry, I'm sorry." I'm like, "Relax, it's fine, it's not a big deal. Like, I'm still winning, it's not... Don't worry about it. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have done, I'm sorry." And finally, I just said, "Well, how far is the guy behind me?" So he was like, kind of my eye. He was like, "Oh, he's like, you know, he's about 30 seconds back, he's about 40 seconds back." So I kind of had a feeling where he was throughout the race. I gave him that little job to help me out there, but it was... I was very appreciative with him, and he did an amazing job pointing out things, you know, for the past two years. So he's a really good... Good at what he does, but he felt really bad about that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stayback?
Yes.
Kevin, it certainly was a pleasurable task to acknowledge both your running and your coaching accomplishments via this proclamation. You certainly have distinguished yourself among other runners and coaches, not only here in Scranton and Lackawanna County, but across the entire of Northeast Pennsylvania. And the tribute being afforded you here today, in conjunction with those accomplishments, is certainly well-deserved, and I wish you nothing but good luck in the future in all other marathons that you choose to get involved in.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Come on up, Kevin. Listen, come on up.
Kevin, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll start with the proclamation. Whereas on April 12, 2015, Heidi Peoples won the women's title at the Second Annual Scranton Half Marathon in one hour and 16 minutes and 57 seconds. She is the area's greatest female runner of her generation, with three wins in the Steentown Marathon. Whereas Heidi is a former Riverside High School state champion and received a collegiate All-American honors while running for Moravian College, including the 1500-meter indoor title, two NCAA cross-country silver medals races, and in 2008, Heidi placed 28th in the Women's U.S. Olympic Marathon Trials in Boston. She finished fifth overall in the Philadelphia Marathon, and most recently won the Binghamton Bridge Run. Whereas she returned to running after the birth of her daughter, putting her name in the book as a three-time women's champion. She is a West Granton resident and a gifted teacher in the Riverside School District. Heidi has also been a cross-country coach at Marywood University and is currently a part-time online running coach for RunSmart Project. Whereas her biggest fans are her family, husband Will, son Liam, daughters Caroline and Rebecca. Now therefore, we, Jim Wonsak, Patrick M. O'Malley, Edward G., Stayback, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim May 6, 2015, as Heidi Peoples' Day in Lackawanna County.
Heidi, I would be back at McDade Park with my son Vincent, and Heidi would be back there with her children, and I think she was actually carrying, I think Liam probably at the time, and she was practicing. She was practicing and getting ready for the races. And to win three Steentown Marathons is incredible. I'm assuming that you're probably the lead woman. You're the most wins at this point, or are you tied with Lyford?
I'm tied. Yeah, uh-huh. We are tied, so last year, you know, it didn't... I fell a little short.
Yeah.
So I still have some unfinished business to'll say in Scranton to do.
So we've got to get that fourth one this year, everything goes right.
Yeah, if everything goes right.
Yeah. But I was actually down at the half marathon. It's just a great event. It really is. Last year, there was 2,800 people that registered, and I think 2,400 actually started the race. This year, I think 3,200 registered and 3,000 actually competed in it. I mean, this is on Providence Road on a Saturday morning. Like, what an economic impact, and what a great event, you know, to keep our community healthy. And the weather was fabulous. Wasn't that a great day for a race?
And, you know, you don't realize how fortunate you are to have the hometown crowd behind you, because the next week, you know, I just went to Binghamton and ran the bridge run, and it was so quiet. You know, you didn't have anybody out there. Like, people just know you and cheer you on, you know, whatever level you are in Scranton, and it just is something to say for the event, really.
How about coming to the stadium? There were some roars when you were coming into the stadium. They were yelling.
I mean, throughout the whole race, the only... You know, it does... On those trails, it gets a little quiet, but other than that, you know, you hear fans all over. And that turnaround point, for me, it's just like, "You're the first woman," you know, and everyone just fuels you.
You're an inspiration to the women that run. You really are. You have three children, and you're winning half-marathons and full-lawed marathons. I think this is going to be a great year for you.
Thank you.
I think the fourth is within reach.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stayback?
Thank you. Heidi, your proclamation states you are the area's greatest female runner of your generation via three Steentown Marathon wins, a whole host of other wins in addition to being a two-time Olympic triad qualifier. That should be triad qualifier. That is something unusual, isn't it?
Yeah, you know, there are some locals that have tried out for the Olympic Trials, and they've run the event, and it's... I know that Carly Shay is one that comes... She's from Forest City, that comes to mind, and that's what I like to do. I like to defy the odds, and I want to make it known that it is possible to continue on, you know, from high school to older age, and do the best that you can.
Well, after listening and reading everything I have seen, you certainly have earned a title.
Thanks.
Of the area's greatest female runner of your generation, and I think a special round of appreciation is awarded.
Yes.
Heidi, the tribute being afforded you here today by all of us is certainly in good taste. It is well-deserved, and it acknowledges your running accomplishments, and congratulations to you on all that you have achieved and all that you hope to achieve in the future. And a very special congratulations on the birth of baby girl Rebecca, who is closing in on three months of age, isn't she?
She's 15. She'll be 15 months, yeah.
When?
15.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Heidi, congratulations. Everybody said it all. I don't know what more I can say, except that it's remarkable what you've been able to accomplish. So I'm going to continue to poke fun at the one gentleman in this room here. So when you passed him by, I mean, you were already...
Passed him by? She passed him at the starting line?
No, but on the turnaround.
Oh, that one, okay.
So he wasn't even... You were already running by him before he even got coming by.
You know, it's amazing, those people that...
Heidi, it's that one right there, that guy back there. See him with the arm? That's him.
But it's amazing, because they still have the energy to, you know, cheer for me. You know, that's what is so inspiring, you know? They're still saying, "Go Heidi," and they're, you know, on that side.
He said he was cheering for you, almost hyperventilating.
Thank you.
You've done a great, a great job, and it's... We like to post the times in our office, the highlight. I can't do it, so I... That's why, you know, they laugh at me. They said, "You're a non-participant," you know, but I post their times in the office, but it is... It's amazing. I mean, really, to... Anybody that can run that time, that... You have to be so mentally strong and so focused, because it is hard and...
I mean, and it's interesting, you know, that people that are... A lot of people are trying this event and coming out, so it's interesting to see people that never, he never thought would be a runner, so maybe we'll see you out there.
I don't know about that. Pat's the runner out of the three of them. I don't know about that. But thank you. Please, come on up.
Bring her up.
I don't want to bring her.
Bring both of them up. Come on, Heidi, come on.
Want to come up for a picture?
Come on for a picture, come on. Come on, Mom. Come on, Mom.
I don't know if she wants to. I want to leave her. You don't want to provoke her.
Okay, you want to stay here? Come on.
We're going to have her stand right here on this chair.
Oh, boy, he gets to stand on a chair.
You want to stand on the chair?
Oh, she wants to.
No? We want you to sit.
Yeah, come on, you love standing.
Go sit on the chair, so I can see her.
What, do you want me to hold you?
Yeah.
All right, here we go. All right, how's that? Stand right there, all right. All right. All right.
Where's the part? Sorry, she's doing everything but there.
Okay, guys, everybody smile. Everybody say, "Chee!" Chee!
All right, let's see.
You don't want to cover her.
Chee!
Kevin, come on up. This was the one, probably. We'll do all this together. This will be a good picture.
Do you have your children with you too?
Come on.
Cassidy, go with Daddy.
Would your wife like to be the picture? Come on.
No, I'm excited.
Come on, Cassidy.
She's got the lollipop, and everything, that's going on.
Here we go.
You hold this one.
There we go.
There we go.
Very nice. Wow, I'm going to... Oh, my gosh.
Thank you very much.
Really, Kevin, congratulations. It was nice to talk to you when it was an out of breath after hearing that you were doing that. I'll send you copies of the show, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I got shows. It should be on ECTV. It's going to be on again.
Absolutely.
See you, guys. Before we move on, I just want to bring up that Matt Burns at Scranton Running Company does a fabulous job, and he's the director of this half marathon, and he's building runners. Am I right, Kevin? He's building runners every... From walking to jogging to running to half marathons.
I said it a little bit, the people that you tell us, you never tell me you're running. I mean, my wife gave me...
All levels. It's all levels at this point. Yeah.
You should see the trail in the evening, you know, it is packed up here.
It is.
We have over 400 people coming up to sign up for running clubs, and it's awesome.
Matt does a good job down there. He's building some great runners.
Break, though, that way he can get out and run the race.
Yeah, we want him to do that Steentown. You guys have a good day. Thanks for being here today. Thank you very much.
We're going to move on to resolutions.
Right, sir?
Resolution 15-0097, I'll make a motion to approve the current payables. May I have a second?
Commissioners, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers from 204016 through 204408 inclusive, totaling $3,520,362.13, and electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $2,
Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. I am going to combine these next motions, since they all deal with the area on aging. So I'm going to combine Resolutions 15-0090 to 15-0101. So I'll make a motion to combine those resolutions to approve the addendum to the area agency on aging. May I have a second? Mr. Frederickson?
Thank you, Commissioners. Resolution 090 is a resolution by the Board of Commissioners between approving an addendum agreement between the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging and the Automated Security Alert for Fiscal Year 2014-2015. Resolution 091 is a resolution, again, approving an amendment to the agreement between the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging and Moms Meals for Fiscal Year 2014-2015. Resolution 092 is, again, approving an amendment between the agreement between the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging and Silver Care for Fiscal Year 2014-2015. Resolution 093 is approving an agreement between the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging and the Advocacy Alliance for Guardian of Personal Services for Fiscal Year 2014-2015. Resolution 094 is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging and their providers for overnight shelter supervision for Fiscal Year 2014-2015. Resolution 095 is a resolution approving a service agreement between the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services and Pine Brook Family Answers for Fiscal Year 2014-2015. Resolution 096 is a resolution approving an amendment to the agreement between the Department of Human Services Homeless Assistance Program Grant and Catholic Social Services for Fiscal Year 2014-2015. Resolution 098 is a resolution approving an addendum to the agreement between the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging and Caregivers of America LLC, effective May 1, 2015 through June 30, 2017. Resolution 099 is a resolution approving an addendum to the agreement between the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging and Comprehensive Client Care Services, Inc., effective May 1, 2015 through June 30, 2017. Resolution 100 is a resolution approving an addendum to the agreement between the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging and Silver Care, Inc., effective May 1, 2015 through June 30, 2017. And Resolution 101 is a resolution approving an amendment to the agreement between the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging and TeleSponsor Services, Inc., effective May 1, 2015 through June 30, 2017. Commissioners?
Thank you. With us today is our Director of Human Services, Bill Browning. Anything to add on all those resolutions?
No, these are all routine adjustments. The only difference is that we're adding a service to caregivers, comprehensive of Silver Care and TeleSponsor, to allow for transportation to the personal care attendants. The others are just moving dollars from one service center to another to ensure that we're efficiently using the funds allocated.
Are there any questions for Bill? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to award the Sullivan Road Bridge Structure Replacement Project North Abington Township to T. Brennan Heavy Equipment, the lowest responsible bidder, at a cost not to exceed $235,000. May I have a second? Mr. Frederickson?
Thank you, Commissioners. Motion to award the Sullivan Road Bridge Structure Replacement Project North Abington Township to T. Brennan Heavy Equipment, the lowest responsible bidder, at a cost not to exceed $235,000. And here to speak on that today is the county engineer, Gary Covell.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is for a 42-foot-long structure in North Abington Township on Sullivan Road. We received nine bids. T. Brennan was the lowest. Larry Lukasik and myself brought the contractor in, lowest bidder, discussed it with them, and were comfortable with the bid.
Are there any questions for Gary concerning the bid? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Next up is a motion 15-0103. I'll make a motion to accept a quote from KME Kovach Ford for the purchase of a 2015 Ford Inceptor SUV at $36,511.75, and for a 2015 Ford Inceptor sedan at $31,845.31 for the Sheriff's Department. With us today is our Director of Purchasing, Kevin Mitchell. I'm sorry, may I have a second on that motion?
Second. Kevin? Good morning, Commissioners. It's... There are two 2015 Ford Police Interceptors. We recently had two 2006 Crown Vics go down, and to repair them, it's just not worth it, according to our mechanics, so... There are two vehicles that'll be placed in our fleet sometime in the first week of June, and we'll be able to utilize them going forward.
Did we use the CoStar program for this?
Yes, their CoStar contract.
Yeah, Commissioners, they were purchased through the CoStar program, so they're in compliance with the bidding requirements.
Right. Okay. Any other questions for Kevin? I know the sheriff's been asking for new vehicles for quite a while, so...
Since the day I started.
All those... Even before you, exactly. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the board at this time? Seeing none, Commissioners, other business. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Stayback. Any other business? Commissioner O'Malley?
Okay. I'd like to, well, behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we'd like to congratulate Gary DeBilio for being Penn State Alumnus of the Year. Had an opportunity to be at the event at Fiorelli's last night. It was great attendance, I think there was over 500 people there in honor of Gary. And Gary, what do you think? It was a great night. Your family was there.
Thank you.
A lot of friends.
Yeah, it was a great night. I'm very happy to receive the award, and everything went really well, and thanks for putting the ad in the program. I appreciate that.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you very much.
It's a great honor.
Appreciate that.
Also, I'm not sure if anyone had an opportunity to read the paper this morning, but Trooper Alex Douglas was on the front of the paper with Corporal Brian Dixon's wife, and it was nice to see Alex Douglas, Trooper Douglas, in his uniform, walking around. Looks like his rehab is going really well, and just like to thank him for all that he's done, and wish him luck with the rest of his rehab. Also, this Saturday, May 9, at McDade Park, we're having a fishing derby, and it starts at 11:00 a.m. to 12:45 p.m., and that's for children four years of age to eight. And then the second round is 1:15 to 3:00 p.m., and that's ages nine to 12 years of age. There's going to be trophies, hot dogs. It's going to be a great day, and if you need some information, it's for McDade Park, it's 963-6764. Also, this coming Monday, the 11th, at 11 o'clock at the courthouse by the flagpoles, we're going to be doing an announcement with the Vietnam Committee, announcing a Vietnam memorial, which will be erected sometime in late September of this year. Also, on Wednesday, the 13th, is Armed Forces Day Luncheon at St. Mary's. Anyone in the public, please try to attend. It's a great day to remember our veterans and all of our military. Also, on Saturday, May 16th, is Armed Forces Day Parade. Please come on out. This is a great day. Like you said, it's to honor our veterans, honor our military. Starts at 11:00 a.m. downtown Scranton, and come out and show your support and show your patriotism, bring a flag with you, it'll be a great day. And I would also like to wish all of the mothers of Lackawanna County a happy, safe Mother's Day, especially my mom. And that's it, Commissioner Wonsak, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. First off, we had a, our annual Bike Safety Fair, it was the first year that we did it, we did it up at PNC Park at the baseball stadium, and it was great. To see the little kids bring their bikes and be able to ride around the concourse was pretty cool. I would like to thank some of the sponsors that helped make that happen, because if you know anything about us over the last three years, we really try to incorporate so many different people to make it happen, and we want to thank the rail riders for allowing us to use the stadium and providing popcorn out to the kids, as well as, as well as Garrity's Food Market, which provided apples and water and hot dogs as well, and PNC Bank for, for the, providing the free helmets that we gave to these kids. And I'd like to also thank the state police and the Scranton police officers who were there to give a talk to the kids about how to ride a bike. It was really nice. And lastly, but not, not least, Cedar Bike, who donated the bikes, beautiful bikes, envious. Any, any kid that saw those bikes were envious of the bikes that were won. So really, it's, it's events like this that were really, really nice. So this is an annual event that we do every year, right around, right around the same time of the year, so it's something that if, if your child wants to have an opportunity to win a bike, or come and ride around the baseball stadium, or get a free helmet, make sure you mark it on your calendars. It's right around usually the first of May every, every single year to watch it, to follow us on Facebook, we usually put the information out, but it was a great event, and it's something to, not only, as I said, have an opportunity to win a bike, but to get there and get a bike, a free bike helmet, and enjoy a hot dog and some popcorn and an apple, so we're very happy of all these sponsors that, that allowed that to happen. Commissioner O'Malley did talk about the fishing derby. Fishing derby's a great time. And he, I mean, we do it in the different times, as he stated earlier, so, so the younger